Good evening, City of New Brunswick zoning board, City Council Chamber, 78 Iron Street, 6:30 meeting, January 22nd, 2024. Roll call.
Sheets that I prepped. I feel like chair, please chair, whatever. I need one for roll. Okay, Lizzie Mamehys. Derek Merrill.
Here.
Jeanette Torres. Dejira Torres. John Cox.
Here.
Michael Toblin.
Here.
Karla Castaneda. Michael Belvin.
Here.
Kristen Rich.
Yeah.
Rafael Manzanares. John Zimmerman.
Here.
Okay.
Public announcement.
Please be advised that the notice requirement to the open public meeting act have been complied with and satisfied that the annual notice would be sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings by the zoning board adjustment in the city of New Brunswick as the father of the city clerk has to place an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, 78 Iron Street, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and have been transmitted to official newspapers of the city of New Brunswick and the homeowners should be in Starlet.
To the flag.
My pledge of allegiance is laid by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united out in this world. The reason that justice is law.
Yeah, I guess the time will hand it over to you because reorganization is working.
Okay, thank you. All right, so first up, we have the nomination of the chairperson for the zoning board of adjustment. Are there any nominations? All right, Michael Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
You're stuck with it.
Now you can go.
All right, Kevin nomination of vice chair.
I nominate John Zimmerman.
I'll second.
You guys are just too fast. All right, Derek Merrill. Yes. Mike Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Nomination of board secretary.
We always use the nominee, the plan, so we will, if anybody wants to.
I like the nominee outside the green guys.
I'll second.
Let me say it.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Mike Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
What about the board attorney? It's a good part.
Yeah. So the city of New Brunswick has an on-staff attorney for purposes of their boards. That is Mr. Jeremy Solomon, and I recommend continuing with Mr. Solomon in that capacity as board attorney for the zoning board adjustment to the board act.
I'll nominate Mr. Solomon.
I'll second.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Michael Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Appointment of conflict board attorney.
We went out to bid for this in December. We received one proposal from the RFP from McNamara and Scotland and Mountain for Carl Penn as conflict board attorney. So I recommend that the board forward to affirm McNamara and Scotland and Mountain. They've been our conflict board attorney for many years.
Robert, your nomination.
I'll second.
That was John Cox, was it?
Yes.
All right, Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Mike Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
Yes.
Appointment of board planner.
We received two bids for planning services, and we think that it would be appropriate to, we received from CME and from Big Now Planning. Big Now has been our planner for a very long time, and we think that the city should continue with Big Now planning.
Do I have a nomination?
I'll nominate Daniel for Big Now.
I'll second.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Mike Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Appointment of board engineer.
So as you may have heard, Mr. Hajar is not going to be with us much longer, but in the interim, I think it's appropriate for us to continue with the city engineer in that capacity as the board engineer. We will address the capacity in which whoever replaces will get, you know, appointed at a different meeting, but for now, to continue on with Hajar for climbing.
I'll make a motion to continue with Mr. Hajar.
I'll second.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Michael Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appointment of conflict board engineer.
So we, this is where it gets kind of interesting. So with the planning board, we awarded to two conflict board engineering firms because of Mr. Hajar's departure to cover our bases on that front. I was not aware that the city engineering department went out to bid for planning services, and so they awarded for, not planning services, sorry, engineering services to French and Perillo at the previous city council meeting. They are going to, that firm is going to stand in for city engineer and other engineering services for the city. French and Perillo also applied for conflict engineer. And so there's no need, it would be odd and duplicative to have them as conflict engineer and probably most likely the firm that gets appointed to board engineer at a future meeting. So I'm recommending that we just continue on with Delaware and Delaware Rar who used to be our regular board planner before we hired Camber for Mr. Hajar. And then we'll address the French and Perillo situation at a future meeting.
Okay. Do I have a nomination? I'll nominate Delaware Rar for their conflict engineer.
Second.
Second.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Michael Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Appointment of hydraulic modeling water system capacity analysis.
So these next two are both services provided from Lot McDonald on an as-needed basis as, what do they call it, proprietary software proprietary services. They're not subject to parent open bidding. But for both of them, I recommend that we continue on with using that service as needed. We'll have to do two separate votes, but I'm just kind of covering for both of the appointments now.
Do I have a nomination for hydraulic modeling water system capacity analysis?
I'll second.
Okay, Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Mike Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Appointment of traffic system analyst engineer. We're going to make it a nomination for Lot McDonald.
Okay, I'll nominate guys.
Do you want a second, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Mike Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Last is 2024 calendar meeting dates.
Are they on the website, Ken?
They are on the website.
So you can move that they be adopted as opposed from the website.
Devin nomination move it published on the website. I'll second.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Mike Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Minutes of the board previous meeting.
We don't have any minutes.
Done, okay. Extension of time, Chelsea Brothers LLC, ZB 2021-02, 236 Front Street, Lot 224, Lot 26101.
Yes, the applicant has requested an extension of time to complete its outside agency approvals. They are, as far as I can tell, very well ahead of their timeline as they're requesting a one-year extension to, if I recall correctly, December 20th of 2025. At least they're not rushing it at the last minute at the end of the year. So should the board act favorably, we will grant an extension of time for up to one year for this application. It would be their first extension of time request.
And that will go until 12/25?
Uh, December 20th, 2025. They're still within their regular protected period.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to extend the time.
I'll second.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Mike Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
203 Hamilton Street, LLC, ZB 2012912, 203 Hamilton Street, Lot 57, Lot 17, 1960, 61.01.
Okay, so similar situation, except this time they're requesting their third and final extension through February 25th of 2025.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Is that Belvin?
Yes.
Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Michael Toblin.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich.
Yes.
John Zimmerman.
Yes.
John Cox.
Yes.
Go to the public hearing, B&amp;B Investors LLC, 140 Sedan Street, Lot 171, Lot 35, ZB 2023-05. The application proposes to make this vacant lot of land and build a two-story, two-family dwelling.
Good evening, chairman, board members. As you mentioned, this is the application for B&amp;B Investors LLC. The property is located at 140 Sudim Street, Lot 171, Lot 35. The proposal is to build a two-story, two-family dwelling in the R5A zone where two-family dwellings are permitted. Right now, vacant land exists on the property. Obviously, we're looking to develop that for the two-family dwelling. We did appear at one hearing previously where my engineer, Mr. Dan Doran, an planner, Mr. Dan Doran did provide testimony. We've since carried that a number of times. Mr. Lamphret was here last time, he couldn't be here tonight, so I, John DeLuca, I'm covering for him. But we seek a number of variances associated with this development for minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum side yard on one side, minimum side yard on both sides, and maximum floor area ratio. There was testimony put on the record as to those variances from an engineering standpoint and from a planning standpoint. But if you need to hear that again, my engineer and planner are is here, so he can provide that testimony. But the purpose of us carrying the meeting and coming to you again was so that you could see a rendering from an architectural perspective. And rather than allow me to describe it, I'll let my architect, Mr. Bill Doran, do so. So unless the board has any housekeeping issues, then I'd like to have my first witness sworn in to testify.
So I think we need to address that we have potentially the same board members from that October meeting and/or that the members who weren't here listened to the audio that was provided.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so who listened to the audio? Who wasn't here at the October meeting? We have activated that.
And then one other housekeeping issue. Is there any member of the board that has any conflict with this application? Seeing, and we also have another member.
Yes.
Just so.
Yeah, and you know that Mr. Karla Castaneda is here with us.
And then, if I just may ask, how many voting members do we have on the board?
We have seven now.
You have seven, okay, good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure because we are seeking a D variance.
Any board member who would have any questions before he begins?
Chairman, my notes show that the applicant had essentially completed their testimony and put in their case, but there were some questions from members of the board as essentially what the project would look like.
Right.
So they wanted to see some architectural renderings.
Okay.
And I think that's where we left it last time.
Did we open it up to the public the last time?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so we will have to do that anyway. Okay. Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Mr. Doran?
If he can be sworn in to testify and qualified as an expert.
Can you please state your names, vote your last name for the record?
William Doran, D-O-R-A-N.
Mr. Doran, do you swear out front to the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Doran, you have appeared before this board in the past, right?
Yes.
Have you pronounced or changed in any way since the last time you appeared before this board?
They have not.
We will accept you as an expert.
Thank you.
Keep it quick and simple. We do have some color renderings of the house that we were proposing along with the adjacent houses on either side of it. I didn't bring, I think I brought five copies, so.
Are these a separate?
Yeah.
We'll have to mark that, mark it as a one.
So this, this house is approximately 1,800 square feet, 900 square feet each floor, two bedrooms, I'm sorry, three bedrooms, a bathroom, and a living room and kitchen and some storage and utility on each floor. We do have a basement in the building that will be used just for utilities. The front facade will be hardy plank. We have a light beige hardy plank with black framed windows and white EZAC truck. We're here to show you that rendering so that you can see what that building would look like in its context.
And over to the board, have any questions on this?
We have nothing further unless the board would have any questions of my engineer and planner. That's all we intend to present tonight.
Okay. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this application? Please come forward. Mr. Fredrick?
Can you please state your names, vote your last name for the record?
Charlie Cratobill, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L.
Do you swear out front to the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Some questions, so the principal of the applicant is Mr. Vinan Shah?
Uh, that is right.
Okay, Mr. Shah is not with us today?
No, his wife is in attendance, but he cannot be here.
Okay. I have just one item I wanted to put on the record. Thank you. Coffee here. I'll note that I reviewed the application, site plan application. I see an email address for Mr. Shah. I had a conversation with him at the October meeting out in the hallway. You know, he mentioned that he has other rental properties in New Brunswick and assured me that they're, you know, good, solid places that, you know, neighborhood would be proud of and lucky to have. In case you don't know, I live in this neighborhood, but I live basically right across the street from this proposal. And so I followed up pretty shortly thereafter with Mr. Shah trying to just get information on where those properties are in New Brunswick. Can the applicant's attorney or, I guess, his wife who's here tell us where these properties are?
I don't know that that's even relevant for this application. The applicant's identity and the applicant's business practices are not of relevant concern for whether or not the applicant meets the criteria to achieve the variances request.
Thank you.
I understand your curiosity, but I just don't think it's part of the criteria that this board can consider.
Okay, well then, just for the record, we emailed him three times and got no response. Disappointed in that. You know, I care about the block, I care about the neighborhood, and if somebody's going to be developing there, you know, I would like to have a good, you know, communicative relationship with them. And unfortunately, got no response. I was just using the email address that was on the application. And for the record, I did also speak to Mr. Lamphret about it and asked him to ask his client to respond to at least acknowledge receipt. I never got that, so disappointed in that. I did want to ask another question. Is it true that the neighboring property owners on Sedan Street have expressed an interest in purchasing the land?
That, that's not true. It was offered up for sale as required with an undersized lot, and neither of them expressed interest in purchasing the property. Neither of them made any offers to purchase the property.
Okay, have to be honest, that doesn't comport with, you know, what I've learned about the situation, both in the hallway at that October meeting of the zoning board and also speaking to one of the gentlemen who lives right next to it. So if the applicant's relying on that kind of thing for their approvals, I would submit that, you know, some proof should be required or some substantiation should be made for those claims. And I don't know if that's something that's on the record. I didn't see anything about it.
The property was listed for sale, and that was part of our application submission. I don't have copies of those tonight because it was included in our submission.
Sure, but just because something's listed for sale, I don't think means that it was offered to the neighbors, right? The neighboring property owners that I'm asking about, where they approached, did they express an interest in it? I had thought that both neighbors on both sides on Sedan Street had been, at least at one time or another, interested in buying the land, so I'm just confused.
Yeah, the neighbors were notified by both regular and certified mail that the property was available for sale. We received no response, we received no offers. So I would submit that our obligation to offer the undersized lot to the adjacent property owners so that it could become a conforming lot was satisfied by those communications. And like I said, we received no offers to purchase the property.
Okay, well, I know I have limited time, so I'll move on, but I encourage the board members to probe this issue yourselves. The, I guess the other thing is I see sheets of paper with a rendering on it. I know that one of the board members had asked for a rendering, and I guess I'm a little disappointed that, you know, it's not on display here like the other boards that all the applicants always bring. You know, I think there's only a handful of copies that were brought. Did the applicant think to bring copies for the public? Is this allowed?
You can distribute those to the public if you wish, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, and it won't take away from your time. I'm going to suggest that you can certainly distribute those renderings to the public if anyone is interested in seeing them, they're not a secret.
Well, I for one would like to see one, and, you know, just emphasize that, should this applicant come before boards like this again, it's good to include the public, communicate with them, especially when they reach out to you. And when you are going to introduce a new piece of evidence into the record, you should bring copies for everyone and put it on display for everyone. So again, disappointed with how this has proceeded so far, and that's all.
All right, thank you. Any other member of the public have any questions or comments on this application? Seeing, now we're going to close the public portion, board member discussion group?
You mean close?
The public section.
Or you, did you, or you, I didn't notice. You actually put it out to the public for copies, okay.
Yeah, that's what I told them.
Yeah, yeah, all right. And just everything, that's too high.
Any members of the board have any questions or comments? Board discussion?
Mr. Chairman, my notes do say that at the October meeting that the applicant did testify that they had sent letters to the adjoining property owners. No response, no one was interested, and there was no sale.
Thank you, appreciate it. Dan, the board acted favorably, do you have recommendations?
Sure, certainly. So if the board, should the board act favorably, the following conditions would apply. It would be in compliance with the terms of the city engineer report dated, what date?
November 22nd, 2024.
November 22nd, 2023. Submission of all necessary easements and cross-accesses agreements were reviewed and approved by the board attorney and city engineer prior to filing the same. Performance payment of site performance funded in amount reviewed and approved by the city engineer. Submission of site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in amount calculated pursuant to Title 16.24.160. Payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Title 13.04, 13.08. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer if required. Compliance with the terms of the Big Now planning report dated.
October 18th, 2023.
October 18th, 2023. Planning review escrow funded for all anticipated gross approval reviews. Payment of all other fees due to the city of New Brunswick related to development or use of this project. Payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver, DNR Canal Commission approval or waiver or proof of being outside the DNR canal area. Pre-hold soil conservation district approval or waiver. Submission of engineering site plan to comply with all, with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submission of architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. While utilities in the site improvements to be maintained by the applicant at their total expense. All onsite utilities to be constructed underground. All temporary improvements into the public right of way shall require city council approval. All construction staging shall be done onsite unless an encroachment allowing it for the public right of way is approved by city council. Streets shall be kept clean of sediment and debris. The applicant shall cause the streets to be cleaned and directed to do so where the record of public works. Tracking paths will be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of damaged streets, curbs, and sidewalks as per the direction of city engineer. And could you give me the variances, Todd?
So the variances were existing conditions for lot area and width.
Lot area and width, okay.
New violations for side yard. That's two.
For side yard, combined side yard or both of them?
Two for single side yard.
Okay.
One for combined side yard.
Okay.
One for building cover.
Okay.
And a D variance for the M A.
Okay, so we've got an FAR variance, two single side yard setbacks, one combined yard setback variance, a building covered variance, existing conditions for lot size and lot width.
Parking.
And parking, where's, I'm just looking for the one that's in the record. Parking variance, and they'll have to comply with payment of the parking fund as a special condition.
Just one question, Mr. Son. The letter that Mr. Cratobill gave, do we have to put that into evidence?
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to know the record whether we have to or not.
Well, I don't think that it's relevant. And he certainly testified that he tried to reach out to the applicant and didn't hear back. Whether or not that's relevant to your consideration is your business, but I don't know that the email needs to be made, but.
Okay, all right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I just want to bring up one item that I don't remember if we addressed back in October, and that is the, or the parking permits. I know it's not a parking permit area, but.
But I think we did bring it up, yeah, and that if it does come in, then we would ask them to waive it, correct?
So you'll make that part of a condition of the application, that they waive any possible parking permits that may become available in the future.
Right. We can waive it.
So then I add that to the conditions.
List of conditions.
Yeah, add that to the conditions.
Parking permit.
Waiver.
All right.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just one of the conditions in the plan of the report which they agreed to at the previous hearing was that the basement will be used for storage utilities.
Only.
No occupancy, you guys.
And there's nothing like that.
Storage and utilities only for basement. All right.
Now do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, so it's John Zimmerman. Who's that, John?
Michael.
Oh, Michael.
Belvin.
All right, Derek Merrill.
Yes.
Michael Toblin.
Yes.
Karla Castaneda.
Yes.
Michael Belvin.
Yes.
Kristen Rich. Kristen Rich?
Yes.
John Zimmerman?
Yes.
John Cox?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Very much, thank you. Well, the next application is 276 Hamilton Street Realty LLC, 276 Hamilton Street, 276 Hamilton Street Block 414 Lot 5, ZB 2023-07. The applicant proposes to expand the second and third floors of the existing residential apartment building, 2007, and reconfigure the existing structure. The existing building consists of 26 studios and three one-bedroom apartments, 29 units in total. Propose expansion to add one, 21 studio apartments, a laundry room, and amenities space. The expansion will result in 48 studio units and two one-bedroom units for a total of 50 units.
Members of the board, Thomas Kelso, on behalf of the applicant, 276 Hamilton Street Realty LLC, pleased with the before you this evening seeking approval for the expansion of this existing multifamily residential building. As indicated in the notice, we are seeking site plan and variance approvals for the expansion and reconfiguration of the existing 29-unit residential building in order to add 21 studio apartments and construct various building and site improvements. The expansion will include a laundry space, other indoor amenities, as well as upgrades to the facade, landscaping, lighting, and site layout. The project does provide 28 onsite parking spaces, which meets the parking requirement. I think the members of the board are familiar with this property. I remember it as Alfredo's Restaurant, and you know, that's how far back I am, plus the carriage house in the back. It's quite a really unique property in that location. And I think that my client has done a great job in converting this over the years to a residential building. This application does involve a further expansion of the building and it does require a series of variances. And for the record, I'll list them, and I will note that almost all of them are existing conditions that are being modified to some degree, whether they're being expanded or whether they're just being reconfigured, but they're existing. First, a front yard setback of 34 feet, whereas a minimum of 50 is required. It's an existing condition. A one-side yard setback of 3.09 feet, whereas a minimum of 50 feet is required. Once again, that's an existing condition. A combined side yard setback of 35.33 feet, whereas a minimum of 100 is required. An existing condition. A rear yard setback of 3.69 feet, whereas a minimum of 50 is required. That's an existing condition that is being further exacerbated. A building coverage of 39%, whereas a maximum of 25 is permitted. That's also an existing condition. An impervious coverage of 77%, whereas a maximum of 60 is permitted. Also an existing condition. A floor area ratio of 0.83 to 1, whereas a minimum of 0.30 to 1 is permitted. Again, it's already an F A R variance in its current condition, it's being extended. And then there are two variances that were identified from an engineering perspective. One is one point of access for a building of more than 20 units, whereas a minimum of two points of access are required. I will support that variance with, so you can see the configuration of the lot. And finally, a parking aisle width of 21.89 feet, whereas a minimum width of 24 feet is required. And that is also the existing condition that we feel is appropriate for the site. Overall, I will present four witnesses to you. First of all, the principal of my client, Mitch Broder, who I think all of you are familiar with, has been here before and on numerous occasions. We will provide architectural testimony, engineering testimony, and planning testimony. With that as an overview, if the board doesn't have any questions, I would call Mr. Mitch Broder for testimony.
Any members of the board have any conflict with this application? Seeing nothing, please go ahead.
Mitch, I know you need to just give a brief overview of the project as you usually do. So go for it. Oh, he's going to swear on that, I'm sorry.
Can you please state your names while your last name for the record?
Mitchell Broder, B R O D E R.
Do you swear from the truth to nothing but the truth?
I do.
And you're just testifying against the other?
On behalf, yeah, yeah, I'm one of the principals of construction management and I typically offer a presentation of our work. Thank you, Tom, and good evening, members of the board. Continuing with our post-COVID new development work within the city, we come here tonight to seek your support for what will be our second upgrade and addition project within the past year. The other being at 32 Union Street, which was approved by this board last year and is now in the final stages of construction. We anticipate completion with residents moving into that location within the next four weeks. Eighteen years ago, this board approved our renovating and constructing new apartments at the subject location, 276 Hamilton Street. At the time, this was an abandoned restaurant and apartment building. If you were not around in the days of Alfredo's Italian Restaurant, I, or Attorney Kelso, can assure that you missed out on what was one of New Brunswick's more popular dining spots. This will be only the second time that we would be improving and expanding upon an existing structure that we operate. As part of this project, we are proposing 25 new studio apartments. The spacious new apartments will feature many of the amenities that are expected in today's marketplace. A modern kitchen with stainless steel appliances, wood cabinet for kitchen vanities, quartz countertops, abundant closet space, modern E entrance and security systems, along with other amenities. Due to our keeping the original front facade of the building, which you can see on that rendering there, this location still retains a tremendous amount of character and works well within the surrounding neighborhood as we see it. Unfortunately, though, it does lack many of the common area amenities that are now standard with most new development projects. Such amenities will include a gym, common lounge space, covered parking for 10 cars, rooftop solar system, and more. With this project, it was critical that we addressed the lack of entrance lobby and package storage space. After all, at the time of the original construction, Amazon was a thing of the future along with the Jetsons. The existing entrance lobby is woefully inadequate. Just to get a, have a reference, this is the existing entrance lobby. It is literally about four feet by four feet wide.
Mitch, is that picture in the other gentleman's plans?
No.
No, so we'll submit all the, you want me to mark them?
Yeah, mark them while you do.
I'm sorry, whatever.
Unfortunately, the current condition has it that packages from Amazon are literally left at the front door outside under the porch. The day I actually took this picture, I almost tripped over one of the boxes. I moved one of them inside because there's literally no space for the packages. I'll put this as A4. Accordingly, we will be building a new main entrance with modern mailboxes and package storage cubbies. The proposed entrance lobby and lounge has been designed by B. Garcia Interior Designs. So this will be the new entrance lobby with space to meet someone, packages, mail, et cetera. A4? B. Garcia Designs is an award-winning design firm that has successfully designed interiors of all of our recent new projects. This new lobby area will be located at the center of the property, which will make for much improved access by the residents entering from the parking lot and from the garage. You can see from the rendering over here, the entrance will be back towards the parking area. Whereas right now, it's in the front, so if you park in the garage or the future garage in the parking lot, you have to walk all around the park. So this will be the new entrance door here, and that will be the lobby there.
That's A4, and what does it show?
It shows the new entrance lobby doors. While this project will require 27 parking spaces, we will be fully compliant by providing 28 spots, including five E V and two handicap ADA spaces. Most notably will be that 10 of the existing spots will become covered garage parking as a result of this new construction. This may sound somewhat inconsequential, but I can affirm that after almost 30 years of experience, garage parking has always been far more desired by our residents than exposed parking. Additionally, the onsite bike racks and the ADA handicap spots will now also be under the cover garage. Working towards more sustainable development practices is a goal that is encouraged via both zoning requirements and our choices as a responsible developer. As part of this project, we will be installing a rooftop solar system that will generate sufficient power to sustain all the common area electric needs of both the original section of the building as well as the proposed addition. While the current zoning requires that five E V spaces be provided for the project, we will have the capacity to expand the number of E V spots as needed and we actually look forward to that need arising when the use of electric vehicles becomes more widespread. This will be our second new development with E V parking in the city of New Brunswick, and we want to both encourage and attract this market share to all of our locations. I would also like to point out that current zoning allows for one-third of the required E V spots to be deployed at the time of construction with an extended period of time to build out the remaining required E V spaces. As part of this project, we will be building all of the required E V spaces at the time of construction. This project will also include an extensive overhaul of the exterior landscaping, restoration of the perimeter fencing, as well as relocated and approved garbage facilities. The fencing has become weathered, the landscaping overgrown. So this will be restored, new plantings. The engineer will get into the details of the garbage, but currently it's located in the back of the property. It's going to be relocated and fenced and hidden and it will have better and easier access for the garbage trucks. There is an enormous oak tree in the front of the property, and if you drive by there, I'm sure you'll all recognize it. I thought I had a picture of the oak tree, I did have a picture. Anyway, that oak tree will be pruned and for longevity and aesthetics. We're not going to remove it, even though there was discussion early on in this process of possibly removing it, but I, you know, we just didn't want to go there. I think the thing has got to be well over 100 years old. Love you to see that picture because I've taken it to heart this little, there we go, there's our oak tree. So this is the huge oak tree that's going to remain onsite. But we'll prune the lower branches just so it doesn't look unruly and open up the view to the building a little better once we get done doing that.
We'll call the picture of the oak tree A5.
A5, okay. Oak tree. This property serves as an important segment of the community by providing clean, safe, and more affordable apartments. Being a bit further from the main downtown and Rutgers campus area, we are able to offer these apartments for a percentage less cost than comparable apartments just five blocks closer to Eastern Avenue. With these improvements, this property will continue to make a positive impression as one enters the city from the south traveling up Hamilton Street. As you may be aware, and hopefully are, we have successfully been redeveloping properties throughout the city for the past 28 years. With that, we have earned a reputation as one of the most well-respected development and management operations in the city. Our projects are built with expediency and professionalism. We are a boots-on-the-ground operation with myself and co-principal Lasalleman personally in control over every aspect of construction. Our project sites are well-maintained and safe and our working relationship with the city's building and related departments is outstanding. Not only do we get the job done, but equally, if not more important, is how we operate our properties post-construction. Our full-time management office is located locally at 205 Eastern Avenue with four full-time administrative staff and 12 service mechanics. Our presence is well-known within the city. While we appear before this board every year or two, with the exception of a COVID shutdown for about three years there, our real story is the other 364 days of the year. From daily cleaning and maintenance to yearly capital improvements at all of our locations, our day-to-day operations are well-respected within New Brunswick. While the large flashy downtown projects deservedly get the headlines and ribbon cuttings, there's infillery development projects like tonight's application that help to complete the package of progress that New Brunswick is so well-known for. This $2 million, $2.5 million project will continue the process of improving the city, generate a significant tax rateable, and provide needed new, safe, and professionally managed housing. Les and I are grateful to the city and to this board for entrusting us with the work that we have done to date. Our track record speaks for itself and we look forward to continuing our efforts and to your support of tonight's project. Thank you again, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to address it.
Any member of the board, board professionals have any questions?
Do you know what the proposed rent might be for the studios?
So a comparable studio closer to campus now is pushing around $1,600 a month. These were hoping to be around 14.
Thank you. You're best.
Thanks, Mitch. Hope you're done.
Make sure.
For the record, my tree at Easton and Hamilton is taller and older than Ezra. At this time, I would call Mr. Pietro Rosado for testimony.
Can you please state your names for your last name for the record?
Pietro Rosado, R O S A T O.
Do you swear from the truth to nothing but the truth?
Mr. Rosado, you appeared before the board prior, correct?
Yes.
Has your credentials changed since the last time you appeared before?
No.
We will accept you as an expert.
Thank you. Pietro, if you could, I won't ask you specific questions and I know Mitch gave really an overview of the building itself, but if you could go through the more specifics with regard to the architectural components of the development, you know, the interior spaces and, you know, expound upon the common areas and changes that have been made as a result of this project.
Okay. So as Mitch has mentioned, we're proposing a three-story
Just a little bit, I know Mr. Crabb is looking to get some pictures of all of them.
Is that better? So we're proposing a three-story addition towards the rear of an existing building, of an existing three-story apartment building where the first floor level is depicted on this ZB 100. It's, the ground floor is parking. And also, we're including a new lobby, sort of in the center of the building is between the addition and the existing. And the main lobby, the main entrance is going to have new boxes. We are, the second floor, the second floor proposes a 10 10 4.33. The second floor will include 10 studio apartments, one gym lounge area, and a laundry room towards the back. And the third floor, you can actually see some of the enlarged plans of the studio apartments and the lounge gym area as well as the laundry area on ZB 101. The third floor, and we'll get back to this, the third floor will be another 10, 10 units, 10 studio apartment units on the third floor. With the only difference with the only difference that we will have one-bedroom, one-bedroom apartment, along with a laundry room in the same location as the second floor, but on the, on the third floor. The addition, total addition is approximately 9,995 square feet, and the studio apartments range from 337 square feet to 373 square feet, and the gym lounge area is approximately 559 square feet. The laundry on each floor is 157 square feet. The apartment units all propose a bathroom, kitchen, and living, sleeping area with a closet, and all the heating and air conditioning system will be P-TAC units. The existing stairways, the stairway and towards the rear of the existing structure will remain and will be connected with a hallway to a new egress stair towards the rear. The exterior finishes will match the existing with a cement board lap siding, thin stone base, PVC windows and door trims, and also including, this includes the freezeboard and keystones throughout. And the roof will be asphalt roof shingles and white composite windows. Also, there is an existing porch that, the existing porch in the front of the building and will be partially, the, it's a wraparound porch. The end of it will be partially demolished to accommodate for a two-way, two-way driveway.
That's all I have for Mr. Rosado.
How much work does the driver's area charge for? Do you afford to say them?
One second. About three each, three washers and three dryers.
Any other board member?
Is this development required to have sprinkler systems?
I believe so, yes, yes. So we are actually tapping into the existing sprinkler system that's in the building. So we're extending it out.
Will the covered garage have the sprinkler system in?
I'm sorry?
The covered garage area, that will be sprinkled also?
I believe so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Can we make that, it will be?
Yes.
The dry system in the garage?
Yes.
So the back condition? Garage area?
Garage area.
Fires?
Any other board member or board professional who can put for this, what is, saying none, your next?
I do, trash, did you touch base on the way there? Moving that too, did they say?
I'm sorry.
That's all the questions that we have for Pietro. I would call Mr. Frank Farrell for testimony.
I'm trying to move myself to one easel and one board.
Can you please state your names and put your last name for the record?
Frank Farrell, F A R R E L.
Do you swear from the tower of all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Farrell, you appeared before the board prior, correct?
Yes, I have.
Have your credentials changed in any way?
No, they haven't.
We'll accept you as an expert.
Frank, again, you are the engineer responsible for the civil engineering associated with the project?
Correct.
Could you just give us an overview of the various components of that engineering as we typically do from utilities, access, circulation? And I know there's a question with regard to my traction.
So as has been described, the site is located at 276 Hamilton Street, block 414, block 5. It has a hundred feet of lot frontage on Hamilton Street, as one would surmise. The total lot area is 27,620 square feet. It's a little over a half an acre, it's 0.63 acres. And as was described, the site is currently occupied by a three-story building and a parking field that is as of yet uncovered. The proposal is to construct an addition on the second and third stories, so the first floor is still open and available for parking, to the rear of the existing structure. So I'm referring here to sheet two of seven. It's exactly the same set that was submitted as part of the application. And the addition is under this back parking area. There's a dotted line on this plan that represents the line of that building above. There are, the lot is not changing. The lot generally is compliant with the zone standards at 27,620 square feet, whereas 20,000 is required. It has a lot width of 100, where 100 is required. The lot depth is 276.2 feet, whereas 100 is required. The front setback is 34 feet, whereas 50 feet is required in the zone. However, that's not changing that the existing building is going to remain. So we're not getting any closer to the front. We're extending out the rear of the property. The building also really doesn't get any wider on that second and third floor. As a result, the one-side setback is 3.9 feet, which is going to be really where the existing parking lot is already. There's a desire to cover that last bit of the parking, but the roof there does not, doesn't start there. Rather, the second and third face of the building above doesn't start at that, 3.6 feet. That is still setback at roughly about 10 feet above. So the side yard setback existing is 10.6 feet, whereas 3.9 feet is proposed. But again, that's only this short section, and it's only really a one-story high addition to the building that's covering those existing parking spaces. Above that, it's stepped back. The, as a result, the total side setback also changes from 42.84 feet to 35.33 feet. The minimum rear yards setback is 50 feet in the zone, and 3.69 is proposed, and that is all the way back here. Again, it is over the existing parking field in the rear of the property. One of the benefits of this project being covering that parking area, the only way to do it is with the structure. So we have, we are extending that area. The building height is going to remain the same at roughly, we're just under 35 feet. The maximum building coverage is going to be increased slightly from 21% to 39% of the lot, which is a variance. The maximum building coverage being 25% of the lot permitted. The impermeable coverage is changing slightly. I believe it's just about 1,000 square feet. The existing impermeable coverage is 72% of the lot. The proposed is 77% of the lot, 60% is permitted. The maximum floor area ratio is changing from 0.64 to 1 to 0.83 to 1, and the permitted is 0.3 to 1. Again, an existing non-conforming condition is being changed as a result of this application. The minimal floor area per individual unit complies with the standard 150 square feet per unit. I believe the architect has given the square footage of the proposed units. And the side setback for accessory structures is not really something we need to talk about. One of the things to note here is that the parking is compliant with the required. I believe it's identified in what Mr. Pignell's letter, and also is provided for on-site plan. I believe 28 spaces are required to be proposed. That's what my plan is. Actually, my, the calculation, I believe results in 2017 required as a result of the inclusion of EV spaces, either counting as two to ones or lowering requirement, however you want to interpret it. But nonetheless, we're compliant with parking law for the project. In general, access to the site is going to remain exactly the way that it does today. You have pedestrian access off of Hamilton Street. There's a series of stairs that lead you to the front door. There's also a driveway entrance that is 22 feet wide, which we're not changing. It works, don't break it. The minimum required, however, is for a lot of this, for development of this scale, I believe is on the order of 30 or more feet. There really doesn't seem to be any benefit to this project. It would also require that we take down this oak tree, which is also undesirable. So the driveway access is going to remain. It's a variance condition, but it's going to remain. 22 feet existing, 22 feet is proposed. In addition, as we stand toward the, we're on the right-hand side of the building entering into the property. As we approach the end of what is the existing porch, the driveway width is about 20, is proposed to be 20 feet. That portion of the driveway is sort of being reconfigured. There's already a small island that channelizes traffic around the parking that is on the west side of the lot. And we're sort of just shifting this little triangular channelization island forward, and it's becoming the refuge area. As a result, it's a 20-foot-wide parking drive aisle in that location. But I believe that the same location, roughly the same location on the existing lot is only 18 feet. It's really not an issue. Cars can approach. If somebody else is coming, you'll make, you'll make some room. You're dealing with your neighbors. There's no issue with the site. And we're actually improving on, in this case, on existing non-conforming condition. Also, another improvement to the lot in general is that we're covering, again, this back parking stall. So there's eight along the eastern property line, including two handicap stalls and five EV spaces that are going to be covered. And there's another, I believe, yeah, there's two more spaces in the back of the property that are also being covered. So that's an improvement to water quality. It's an improvement to the user experience. It's an improvement for the ADA users that may, that may find themselves parking these now-covered parking stalls. The pedestrian access, the primary access to the building if you're going to enter having parked in the lot, will be, it'll now roughly be halfway in between the front and rear of the building at this location, I'm sort of gesturing with my finger. It's actually the same location that you'd enter the building now, but it's being expanded and modified to fit the addition. And I believe it's also an improvement as well, where you can move from the ADA stalls into the building itself without having to go outside. You don't have to walk out and around. There's an opening in this section where they can get into the building. In addition to parking, we're also covering the bike parking. The bike parking right now is along this rear concrete area. I suppose that is next to, between the parking stall and the door, a vent there upon the rear. And the proposed condition is going to be in what is currently a landscape bed in the middle of this parking field. And as a result, those bike racks are all located now undercover. They're not exposed vertically to the elements. Landscaping is existing and will be addressed by the applicant as the project is constructed. They're going to replace or enhance the existing shrubbery around the outside perimeter of the lot. And the fence, which has been somewhat of a discussion at the TAC meeting, is going to remain. It will be replaced or repaired or power washed as is necessary to bring it up to what one would expect the fence to look like as a building is constructed, or added up to. The other landscaping in general will remain, including the front, the oak tree at the front. Lighting is proposed and is compliant with the tangent wood. There's a number of fixtures on the west face of the building that are downlighting for the parking field and the drive aisle. There's also a series of lights underneath the second-floor addition that will light the now-covered parking area into the rear. Stormwater management and utilities. Stormwater management is covered by a system. All the furniture is free. Again, the same plan that's used in the apartment location package. There's a series of underground pipes that we're proposing in the back of the lot, where the roof addition will be conveyed, the runoff from the roof, the new roof area, will be conveyed to the detention system by way of the gutters for, again, for that addition. The proposed condition is that we will have no runoff or a very slight decrease in runoff as a result of this application. Right now, this whole parking field drains generally east to west and then sort of down the driveway and out toward Hamilton Street. As a result of this addition, the parking that would have been exposed to the elements is now covered, and that runoff, runoff is being directed to the underground detention system where we convey up through the existing roof leader drainage system all the way out to Hamilton Street. There's a condition, or there's been some discussion at TAC meeting, related to identifying, providing inverts, and providing more detail as to how this connection is going to be made. And should board grant this application approval, we would certainly go out there and do that testing and make sure that everything is going to be designed and constructed in accordance with the engineers' priors. The utilities are going to remain the utilities that are out in Hamilton Street. There's no need to cut up the road. We don't see a reason to go out there and just cut up the road. The existing residential domestic service and then the fire service will be expanded into the addition. We don't have any reason to believe that there's inadequate water service in that location should it be determined that by high-flow tests or other internal tests as a result of the building applications being made in the future, they would need, if they would need to go out and make new connections, they certainly would.
So I have a comment on that. You wanted to comply with the comment regarding the fire service?
I believe, yes.
So the fire service has to be separate than the portable water service?
Correct. I believe that that is the case as of now. I believe that we would agree that that was a condition that we were going to agree to as part of the application, report grant.
Thank you.
Same thing with the lead and galvanized. If the existing service was lead and galvanized, it had to be replaced in accordance with the current standards. Absolutely. Same goes for sewer. There's, if there's no reason to chop up the street to convey the runoff or the effluent from the sewer system of the addition, we don't intend to cut up Hamilton Street just to cut it up. However, we are doing some frontage improvements. I'd like to mention that we are actually going to reconstruct the, I believe, the sidewalk, the stair on the road sheet. Sidewalk, the stair, and the driveway access so that it is in good condition and good working order. I believe that some of that is just due to the nature of time is deteriorating. I covered parking. I'll go over, I think I went over the bad misses.
Yes, you did.
Most of those, again, are existing non-conforming conditions. I think not all of them, but maybe the building area is the only one that's not. In general, I believe that we could comply with the planners and engineers' comments. I believe that there are four or five of the engineers' comments that we wanted to mention specifically. One is that for developments in Mr. Jar's letter dated, I'm sorry, comment 12, the last issued letter. Comment 12 identifies there's a requirement for two points of access for developments that have 20 or more units. That would mean we need a whole separate extra driveway. The site already has more than 20 units and functions just fine without it. There's many, many developments throughout the city that have 20 or more units. We don't see an issue with this layout, and we believe that it is approvable and appropriate for this lot. The parking, the other question about, or not question, or the variance of the design waiver would be the width of this drive aisle. Typically, in 90-degree parking, you have a 24-foot rear backup aisle. In this case, between the last stall or the stall here and the curb, which is existing, and the stall is existing, there's 21.8 feet. It works. I've driven the site, I've parked there, I've k-turned. There's no problem getting out of these parking stalls. In fact, the building is set back from that curb such that if you were to drive and have your car tires sort of impact that curb, you'd still have room for your bumper over that back area. Again, it's an existing non-conforming condition. We don't see a reason to expand the parking area to reduce the side, the distance between the parking area and the side yard to eliminate vegetation to accommodate an additional, I believe, 1.1 feet of parking aisle. I mentioned the driveway width should be 30 to 36 feet. So I believe that's a design waiver would be required. Again, it's 22 feet at the opening, and 20 feet as it extends into the property, whereas it's about 18 feet in the existing condition. And lastly, there was a question regarding, comment 32 in Mr. Jar's letter, has an arrangement been made for parking during construction? The applicant will work with tenants and has the potential to provide parking at other properties that they own, control, maintain, et cetera. Also, construction for this project would be slated for the summer months, which are typically less busy,[1778.16] Also, construction for this project would be slated for the summer months, which are typically less busy and there's less demand for parking at this location. And I believe that that generally, oh, the trash, I didn't cover the trash, I, I'm not, you know. So the trash is moving right now, there's a dumpster bed all the way through the site. As part of this application, it is being relocated and expanded somewhat so that we can have additional, there's additional residences, there's going to be additional trash generation. It is now located, as you're entering the property, there's going to be an enclosure, a screened fenced enclosure on the right-hand side of the, of the drive aisle that is accessible for the garbage truck that is going to be coming to this site to pick it up. We actually met, as part of the, the design for this project, we met with the haulers and they confirmed the size of the vehicle and that this would be an appropriate location that they could access and, and make the pickups that they need to make. I believe that was my slide.
I have no further questions.
Any more members or more professionals have any questions for this witness?
Yeah, I have one quick question. The covered bike area that you're proposing, is that going to have dry fire suppression extended to that area too, you know?
It is underneath the, yes, the, the simplest, it's generally the same area as the parking field. And I, and I believe as a result, the, the designer, it would cover it.
Any other questions, comments from board members or board president?
The electric cars stations, are they in the covered areas of parking lot?
They are located along the Eastu property line, generally covered by the addition.
For the parking, I get that it's already tight, but how many like accidents have happened or little bumps, its neighbors, like?
I don't know the answer to that question.
I, I don't have specific knowledge of any accidents that may occur on site.
Have like all the vehicles that have wanted to go and kind of go up, have they all been able to? Because like I'm looking at this turn where the garbage is.
Oh, this, this, this entrance?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, the existing condition is actually, well, workable, slightly worse than this proposed condition. So right now, should I, you want me to get a little closer? I'm not sure if you can see. Okay, yeah, so if you can zoom in on this, this shaded area, that shaded area is an existing curved, it's not really an island, I suppose, it's the end of the, the end of the porch that's there now. And there's curb there. Immediately across from it, there is a triangle of curbing that is directing incoming cars into the drive aisle rather than driving straight into the side of the last car that's parked in the parking lot. The current width between the distant curbing next to the, building next to the porch and that little triangle is eighteen feet. In the proposed condition, it's twenty. You're making it a little bit wider. We're also opening, we're also changing the relationship between those two features such that you have a little bit, not only is it a little bit wider, you have a little bit more room to make that, to make that. And I believe actually as part of this submitted, I don't know that I mounted it. In part of this submitted plan, we actually demonstrated that, here, this, I should be pointing at this. Sheet five of seven actually shows the refuse vehicle that is going to be used at this site entering the lot. For this purpose, skipping the, skipping the refuse pickup, that what it's going to do is pull further into the lot, K-turn and then leave. And if that truck can make it, generally speaking, any, any passenger vehicle that you or I would own would, would make it.
What about emergency vehicles? Are they smaller?
I believe that the, I believe that this vehicle would be sufficient to also provide an example of an ambulator and other emergency vehicle. To be, not a fire truck, a fire truck is a much, much, much bigger vehicle, but I don't believe that a fire truck would enter the site and pull up next to the building that is currently involved and be that close. It is rare that, that, in my experience, it is rare that, that people that do that work want to get that close with the apparatus to the building.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments?
Package delivery?
I believe package delivery was covered, they, they take packages now. And I believe that they will continue to take packages, much in the manner in which they do, except they've got a better entrance foyer package drop-off area in which to make those deliveries.
Just thinking about, do the, do the delivery vehicles access the driveway or do they park on Hamilton Street?
That's, I've never actually seen a delivery truck there, so I don't know how they do it. All I know is I see the packages at the front door.
You know, even the typical Amazon vehicle has enough space in the, in the proposed driveway if they chose to access the property.
But most likely with them, with you moving the doors down further, that they're going to pull on site. More, more than likely, right? Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Same number, next witness, please.
This time I have a call, Mr. K, Mr. Kessel.
Sorry, what's the date on this plan?
December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I think that they are exactly the rest of the plans that was issued.
Please state your name, explain our last name for the record.
Keenan Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S.
Do you swear or don't swear, is it not true?
I do. Thank you.
You have a few before this board on many pages prior, right?
Yes, I have, it's true.
And are you going to exchange in any way?
No, they have not.
We'll accept you eventually.
Thank you.
For the record, you are a licensed professional planner of the state of New Jersey and you're here to provide planning testimony.
That's correct.
An engineer, not the architect, okay? Just need to get that in order. If you could, we, we've had testimony with regard to a number of variances, many of which are existing conditions but are being modified and changed. And of course, we have one D variance, which is an FAR variance. If you could please give us an overview of your observation of those variances and provide, if you can, a justification for the granting of those variances, if you can.
Certainly. All right, so this proposed development is located within the R six multifamily zone, so this use is permitted. And in terms of the variances that we're seeking, I thought it would be useful to, at first, put this project sort of within the, the context of the recently adopted master plan in this city. And that's because housing was a paramount concern in the master plan exercise. So on page sixty-four of the land use element, there is a very strong statement relative to housing, which is, "Of the land use issues the city of New Brunswick faces as it plans for the future, arguably the most pressing is how to handle the housing and other needs of a growing population." And then when it lists goals for land use within the city, there's several other policy directives that are very relevant to this application, which include the second goal, which is to expand housing supply for different segments of the housing market. The third goal, which is to encourage property owners to make necessary improvements and upgrades to aging buildings. And then also the eleventh goal, which is to promote appropriate infill development and redevelopment of vacant, underused or derelict properties. So the intent of this application is really to improve and enhance what is an existing older apartment building with upgraded amenities while also increasing the number of units consistent with the master plan. And in my opinion, this is accomplished in a manner that maintains the character of the existing building but is also sensitive to the surrounding context and does not create any adverse impacts on neighboring properties. So the D variance that we're seeking is for floor area ratio, which is zero point eight three to one, whereas a minimum of point three, or excuse me, a maximum of point three is allowed within the R six. Now, this is an existing variance condition which is being expanded upon as part of this application. But the board's focus here is really on whether the site can accommodate any problems associated with the proposed permitted use but with a larger floor area ratio than what's permitted by ordinance. So here we're simply utilizing what is an existing paved surface parking lot for a more efficient and beneficial use, which is housing. And in doing so, this addition is conformant to building height and it basically maintains the existing massing setbacks of the existing apartment building on the property. Another significant observation is that the parking will be compliant. So even with the increased unit bed count here, the parking remains consistent with the ordinance. And really, as you evaluate this application, there's really no issues or problems relative to site circulation that would result. And at the same time, there's a number of benefits to the community, to residents of this project, including adding the amenity spaces that were referenced earlier, the new EV parking spaces, new bike racks are proposed, new generator, the enhanced stormwater management. And the architecture itself will match the existing building. So it's going to be a cohesive look, even with this significant addition to the existing building. As Mr. Farrell noted, there's also going to be some repair of the existing front steps and perimeter fencing, a new enclosed dumpster area in a better, more accessible location, but one that's still adequately screened and set back from Hamilton Street. So I think for all those reasons, the board can find that the property can accommodate any problems of which really, from my perspective, there are none with the increased FAR on the site. Now, there's several C variances which we're seeking as well, and all of these can be justified on a C two basis because the overall benefits of this development and of granting this relief, all of which is really integral to the overall project, substantially outweighing the potential detriments. So with respect to building coverage, this is yet another existing nonconforming condition which is being increased from twenty-one percent to thirty-nine percent, whereas twenty-five percent is permitted. By expanding the building over an existing parking lot while maintaining that existing parking supply, this has the benefit of creating additional new quality housing units in the city, which is again consistent with the master plan. And going hand in hand with that variance request is the impervious coverage, which is going to be increased from seventy-two percent to seventy-seven percent as a result of the addition. And this really results from the removal of some small existing landscaped areas within the property. But I think as part of the mitigation, what's really significant here is installing the underground basement, basin and stormwater management, which currently does not exist on this property, which goes above and beyond mitigating for that increase in impervious coverage. And I'll just note that the existing small landscape island within the parking lot that's being replaced is actually being replaced with a covered bike parking area, which is also a benefit to the tenants of the project. As for setbacks, there's a front yard setback condition of thirty-four feet, which is existing, whereas a minimum of fifty feet is required, so existing nonconforming condition, which is not changing. With respect to the side yard setbacks, there is a combined side yard setback requirement of thirty, or of a maximum, maximum of a hundred feet, or excuse me, a minimum requirement of a hundred feet is required, whereas thirty-five point three three feet is proposed. And the side yard setback relief here is limited to a wall along the first-story parking area within the building addition that's really intended to screen the parking. So this has the benefit of, from a neighbor perspective, visually screening that parking and eliminating some of the noise, lighting packs of that area. And the upper stories of the building will actually maintain the existing side yard setback condition along that property line. There's also a rear yard setback, minimum requirement of fifty feet, and what is proposed is three point six nine feet. However, as noted, this will be a conforming three-story building mass in terms of height. It abuts a parking lot on the adjacent Birtwood Terrace property to the rear of the site. And the building itself is just over forty-two feet wide, so it does not extend the full one-hundred-foot width of the property. So it's a variance condition that really occupies less than half of the rear yard in terms of its width and the rest will remain undeveloped. And the rear facade has the same level of detailed materials as the other elevations. Just a couple of other items that I think Mr. Farrell already hit, but I'll just address from a planning perspective. One is the requirement for two points of access. Again, this is an existing condition. The additional units here will not increase the intensity of vehicular movement such that a second driveway is needed. And then it's also a, a practical difficulty for us to add a second driveway, given the width of the property, the existing building on site and the oak tree that you heard about earlier in the presentation. The parking aisle width of twenty-one point eight nine feet, whereas a minimum width of twenty-four feet being the requirement, as Mr. Farrell noted, is actually an improvement on the existing condition. And it's actually a minimized and limited site condition within the overall design of, of the proposed project. So that summarizes the positive criteria for the variances that we're seeking. And then as for the negative criteria, based on the proposed architecture and minor modifications to the site plan, there will be no substantial adverse impacts on the surrounding area. In fact, this will result in a number of improvements to adjacent properties and the community as a whole. It's also consistent with the intent of the master plan land use and housing elements. And this project, inclusive of the variances that we're requesting, will not substantially impair the purpose and intent of the R six multifamily zone. So just by way of summary, the boards and clients have voted favorably on this application. You can grant the relief for the project in advancement of purposes A, E and G of the municipal land use law. From a planning perspective, there's a lot of merit to this application because we're basically taking an existing parking lot, paved surface and creating new quality housing opportunities and adding modern amenities to an older building. There's no documented problems related to the requested FAR variance. And all of the bulk variances here are important to facilitating the overall addition and do not create any substantial impact concern. So the board here can find that both the positive and the negative criteria have been demonstrated for all the requested relief. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Ken. That completes our presentation.
Any member of the board, board professionals have any questions for this witness?
Same number. At this time, we'll open it up to the public, to anyone from the public, which is a comment, please come forward. Come forward, Mr. Crowder.
Good evening.
Your presence.
Good enough. So first, Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick. First, I'll ask some questions as the editor of New Brunswick Today, and then I have some personal comments to make. Just want to confirm the number of units is, existing twenty-nine, and if approved, this would be fifty. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, the existing building is already full or close to full, is that correct? Rented out for the most part?
Would assume so.
And we heard testimony that comparable studios closer to campus are fetching rents of sixteen hundred a month and these, the applicant says he's hoping will go for fourteen hundred a month. I take that to mean there will be no affordable units included in this project, is that correct?
Not within the meaning that you mean affordable units.
Now, if approved, what does this mean for the current tenants in terms of like construction and, and also their rent?
I don't know which, I have to say relevant to the application. I know your period is strong.
I am?
It's not relevant for the sake of.
Okay, well, I do know that construction is sometimes a topic that comes up here as to how the construction is going to be done, how we're going to minimize disruption or impacts on people on site or nearby. Just asking, you know, what the plan is and how it will be accommodated.
Right, this is.
Say it.
So we're actually doing what he's talking about as we speak. And we're doing it at thirty-two Union Street right now. And the plan here is exactly the same. We'll start in the summer when school is out and the city is quiet and we will get the overwhelming majority of the construction done during the construction. Now, it doesn't mean that no one lives there, it doesn't mean that no one's going to have any impacts whatsoever. But I'll tell you that based on our experience with what we're doing right now on thirty-two Union, there's virtually no impacts, virtually not. I'm not saying zero, but virtually not. Okay, everything is contained to the back of the building as this will be. Everything is isolated, it's kept clean, we have staff on site every day of the week, okay, during construction. And it's well-run and there's been no issues or problems vis a vis the current tenants. At least in the building that we're doing at the moment. So our plan is to just simply replicate the same kind of process over here.
Thank you. In terms of rent, is the building rent-controlled? Will it be rent-controlled or will this mean that the existing tenants could see big hikes in their rent?
It's not relevant to this, this application.
I don't know the answer. You looking at me?
Well, I was, I was just looking for kind of like a ruling on, is, is it relevant? Is it okay to ask about that?
Sorry, no, it's not relevant to the application, but I also don't know the answer.
All right, well, finally, were the existing tenants notified at this proceeding tonight?
Everybody who was legally required to be notified was notified.
So presumably, if no one else additional was notified, the tenants were not notified. I just want to make that point, right? The tenants don't get notice. The tenants don't get noticed, even if they're, they're...
The tenants do not legally get notice in application unless they are a property owner within 200 feet. The likelihood is they're probably aware of it, that's all. There's no notification required.
Well, yeah, I'm just, always, always prefer to see people involved and engaged early on in these projects. And I'll move to my comments. I actually lived in this building during the period of time when it was a rooming house, two different times. I have many fond memories there. Do think that the best thing or the greatest thing about living in that building was the diversity of people who resided there. And, you know, there were some students like me, I was a college student at the time, some friends of mine, but also people from all walks of life, different countries, who had come to the city for different reasons. And for the record, I think my rent was $600 a month at the time, so a little more affordable. I don't think I'll be able to move back into this place if the rents are this high. But I do wanna just say that I actually liked almost all of what I heard about the project tonight, except the cost, right? And I do think that part of the reason that housing is such a big issue and such a big problem for us in New Brunswick is that there's, you know, a lot of units coming online that are high-priced, very out of reach for most residents. Is that, is that my time?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll just conclude by saying that, you know, I do, one thing I'm glad to see here is more common areas. I feel like it was an error to remove the common areas back in 2007 and this, this plan looks, looks good. And I hope that it ultimately becomes affordable for people to live in a place like this because it certainly looks like an improvement on, on what we have.
Thank you. Any other member of the public which should speak on this application? Same amount, gonna close the public portion. Mr. Tulsa, you have anything?
No, we submit to the board.
Dan, do you have a, a board discussion? Anyone from the board have anything?
Shouldn't Board Act favorably compliance with the terms of, conditions of board approval will apply. Compliance with terms of city engineering report dated January 20th, 2024 for this project. Submission of all necessary easements and our cross-access agreements reviewed and approved by the board, turning and city engineer prior to filing the same. Payment of site performance, bonded and not reviewed and approved by city engineer. Inspection, submission of a site inspection, inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees in amount calculated pursuant to Title 16.24.106. So 160. Payment of all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to Titles 13.04 and 13.08. Issuance of a road opening permit from the city engineer required. Compliance with the terms of Pignell planning report dated January 17th, 2024 for the developed project. Planning, review, escrow funded for office and pay for those approvals. Payment of all other fees due to New Brunswick related to development and reuse of this project. Payment of all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. No six-point planning board for the waiver. Gain our canal commission for the waiver or proof of exemption from the zone. Pre-old soil conservation district for the waiver. Submitted the hearing site plan. Satisfy with any change required by the planning and or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submit our potential plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Execution of a Title 39 parking enforcement agreement. Variants for, oh, it's already over here. All utilities and other site improvements to be maintained by the applicant for show expense. All site utilities to be disrupted underground. All temporary improvements to the public right of which are provided by state council approval. All construction statements shall be done on site unless an approach been allowed into the public right of which is required by state council. Streets shall be kept clean and sedimented and free. The applicant shall cause streets to be clean if so, if directed to do so by the director of public works. Track attached shall be installed at all construction exits. Replacement of all damaged streets, curbs and sidewalks as per directions of the engineer. Variants for floor area ratio. Again, it's heard in existing variance, front yard setback. Variance for rear yard setback, building coverage, impervious coverage. Points of access, parking aisle dimensions. And driveway width in a special condition for garage fire suppression. So just anything?
Side yard?
Side yard?
And combined.
Combined or single, or both?
Both.
And single side yard setback and combined side yard setback. Variance. Higher than that, what are?
I made a motion to, to, to...
Derek Marrow?
Yes.
Mike Covlin?
Yes.
Charlie Castaneda?
Yes.
Michael Valden?
Yes.
Kristen Rich?
Yes.
Tom Herman?
Yes.
Tom Cox?
Yes.
Alright, thank you very much.
Now, we're gonna move to a other matter of interest to the public. Anybody in the public have anything, comments? Same amount, gonna close that for you. So I have a motion to the chair.